Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 21st meeting of the City Council. We're happy to see each and every one of you here. We would like to call the meeting to order now, and Madam Clerk, please hold your role.
Council President Lyne.
Here.
Councilwoman Prossie.
Here.
Councilmember Sweeney.
Here.
Councilmember Driver.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Middlebrooks. Councilmember McClintock.
Here.
If everyone will please stand for the invocation to be given by our clerk, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to be led by Councilor Driver.
Dear Mother and Father, we just thank you for your love and presence and for your mercy and grace. May each step we take shine a light upon you and may you guide us so that we can be an example for your goodness. In the name of your son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Burkettin has some special guests in recognition, so I'd like to invite the Mayor of the Republican. Take it away.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate it. And we have several proclamations this evening, and we would like to start with the Epilepsy Awareness Month, and I would ask the folks from the Epilepsy Foundation of Alabama if they would come up. Tori Coulter, Sarah Franklin, Jeremiah Stone, Amy Verran, and Philip Wiedemeyer, if you would come down to the front.
Do you want us to switch and become?
We can, yes. Yes, we certainly can. So we'll flip around here just a second, and we will start with the Hoover City Schools Foundation Week. And so we have Anne Marie Harvey, the Executive Director of Hoover City Schools Foundation. If she and the rest of the group would come up. I see we have some board members and Dr. Maddox as well, so please come down and join us in the front. No, that's it, I forgot. She's there, she does not.
Whereas the Hoover City Schools Foundation, or HCSF, has been a vital supporter of the Hoover City Schools, contributing directly to the educational growth and success of students by funding innovative programs and classroom initiatives. And whereas the Foundation empowers teachers by providing grants that enable them to implement creative, hands-on learning experiences beyond the traditional curriculum, enriching the educational journey of every student in the Hoover School system. And whereas the Hoover City Schools Foundation serves as a trusted pillar of the Hoover community, ensuring that every dollar raised stays within the local school system, directly benefiting our students and schools. And whereas the HCSF plays a critical role in bridging the gap between school budgets and the need for advanced educational resources, offering students opportunities in STEM, the arts, and professional development for educators. Whereas through the dedication and generosity of local businesses, community members, and parents, the Foundation continues to foster an environment where every child in Hoover can reach their full potential and thrive academically. Whereas the Hoover City Schools Foundation has consistently demonstrated its commitment to transparency and accountability, ensuring that all contributions make a tangible difference in the lives of Hoover students and teachers. Now therefore, we, Frank V. Burkettin, Mayor, and John B. Lyne, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the City of Hoover, do hereby proclaim the week of October 21st through 25th, 2024, as Hoover City Schools Foundation Week in the City of Hoover. And we encourage all residents, local businesses, and community leaders to join in celebrating and supporting the Foundation's invaluable contributions to our schools and students.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the entirety of the Council. We just want to share how much we appreciate being recognized this week and talk a little bit about what we're doing this week. This week, we made the decision that everybody has so much going on in the fall between football and dances and everything else that we wanted to have our event, but we wanted to give everybody a little bit of a night off. So we're encouraging you to spend one night over the next two weeks with your family at home. Have a nice game night, take a picture, and tag us on social media. But while you're doing that, consider you didn't have to hire a babysitter, you didn't have to buy a new dress or new shoes, or put gas in the car, or do a lot of different things to go out that night. And instead of the money that you might have spent doing those, to make a donation to the Hoover City Schools Foundation. So we can put that right back into the classrooms, into the teacher grants. Our goal is to raise $15,000 over the next 10 to 15 days, and we certainly hope that each of you will support us, and we appreciate the proclamation this evening. Thank you very much. That was a great group that we love and support. And Sarah, should I kill an hour to play? Okay. So we will start, we will go back to the Epilepsy Awareness Month, and we have Tori Coulter, board member, Sarah Franklin, former Executive Director, Jeremiah Stone, the Executive Director, Amy Verran, Chair, and Philip Wiedemeyer, if they would come forward, and we will have an opportunity to read this proclamation as well. Good evening.
Whereas epilepsy is a brain disorder that causes recurring unprovoked seizures. And whereas seizures are sudden surges of abnormal and excessive electrical activity in the brain, which can affect how you act or appear. And whereas one in 26 people will be diagnosed with epilepsy at some point in their lives. And whereas, according to the CDC, approximately 54,000 individuals diagnosed with epilepsy, and over 7,500 of them are children living in Alabama. Whereas people with epilepsy have three times higher risk of mortality due to sudden unexpected death in epilepsy, epilepticus, suicide, and drowning. And whereas having epilepsy can affect your safety, relationships, driving, and so much more. And whereas despite challenges, people with epilepsy can live happy, healthy, and productive lives with proper medical care and treatment. Whereas during National Epilepsy Awareness Month, citizens are encouraged to learn more about this neurological disorder and support organizations that promote epilepsy research, prevention, treatment, and a cure. And whereas the 2024 National Epilepsy Awareness Month call to action is for individuals to share your purple power in celebration of the unwavering strength, resilience, and courage of epilepsy warriors alongside their families, caregivers, and advocates. Now therefore, we, Frank V. Burkettin, Mayor, and John B. Lyne, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the City of Hoover, do hereby recognize November 2024 as National Epilepsy Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens of Hoover, as well as Americans, to increase awareness and understanding of epilepsy through education so that individuals with epilepsy may lead full and productive lives.
On behalf of our entire board, those who were able to be here and those who were not, this means a lot to all of us. As you said, there are 54,000 Alabamians who live with epilepsy daily. And this entire month that we head into November is a month in which we dedicate to raising awareness for epilepsy. Coming up on November 2nd, we have our statewide walk held in Birmingham at the, at Rowland Park. And it's a day in which all of us come together to raise awareness. Epilepsy warriors will be there, patients, advocates, providers, and it's a day for all of us to come together and to fight for us to end epilepsy. But we know that this is a long fight. We know that there's not a cure right now. Statistics say that one in 10 will have a seizure in their lifetime, one in 26 will develop epilepsy. And so when you think about that, all of us, every single one of us, will be impacted in some way. And so for all of us, it's really important to end the stigma surrounded by epilepsy. And so these proclamations are largely important for us to help everyone know about epilepsy, the services that we provide here at the Foundation, such as support groups, and research and education, and the different ways that we connect people. So thank you very much. We hope to see you out at our walk on November 2nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Now, we would like to invite, this will be for Down Syndrome Acceptance Month, and I would like to invite Marcel Roberts, Kevin Roberts, and son Joshua, also Lauren Waits and her son Beau, if they would come up. Are you here? Come on up. Yeah, there you are. Come on up. Christina Norman and her son Landon. And I would also love to invite Miss Hoover Team 2025, Christina Norman, if you would come up as well.
Whereas Down Syndrome is the most frequently occurring chromosomal disorder and is the leading cause of intellectual and developmental delay in the United States. And whereas approximately one in every 700 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated 6,000 births per year in the United States, and approximately 85 of those annuals' births occurring here in Alabama. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of our communities. Whereas yet, despite significant increases in lifespan and intellectual opportunities over the past decade, there's still much work to be done regarding the rights to equality, inclusion, education, medical care, research, employment, and support for people with Down Syndrome. And whereas the City of Hoover encourages all citizens to work together to celebrate the lives of individuals with Down Syndrome, and remember to appreciate and regard every individual with dignity as a valued member of the community. And whereas through public awareness, the City of Hoover supports the initiative of organizations working to ensure people with Down Syndrome have adequate services, are valued by society, and can lead fulfilling and productive lives in our community. Now therefore, we, Frank V. Burkettin, Mayor, and John B. Lyne, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the City of Hoover, do hereby recognize October 2024 as Down Syndrome Acceptance Month in support of individuals with Down Syndrome, as well as their families, advocates, researchers, and medical professionals. We encourage all citizens of Hoover to work together to promote respect and inclusion of individuals with Down Syndrome and to celebrate their accomplishments and contributions.
I'm going to count to three. So count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Stay right there if you will. We go again. Count of three. One, two. One, two.
We appreciate you having us today and acknowledging us for Down Syndrome Acceptance Month. And so Down Syndrome Alabama is dedicated to supporting people living with Down Syndrome, their families, and their communities throughout Alabama by advancing advocacy, providing connections, and promoting education. We envision and strive for an Alabama where individuals with Down Syndrome are accepted and included for who they are. We provide and support to each person and their families, educational resources, networking opportunities throughout all stages of their lives. So on behalf of our Executive Director, Missy Hawker-Hopery, and our Board President, Catherine Gorm, we just want to say thank you for having us today, and we appreciate this recognition.
So if you would, we would love to introduce our new Miss Hoover Team, Christina Norman. Christina is a resident of Hoover and was crowned this past July, and she will represent the city throughout this year. We'll see her a lot at different events, and she will be competing for Miss Alabama Team in March. So I would like for her to come forward and just share a few words about her and her platform. So, good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. I am Miss Hoover's Team, Christina Norman, and I want to first start off by saying I am so honored to be able to represent the City of Hoover this year since I am a resident here in Hoover, and I'm so excited to be here tonight for this proclamation. So my community service initiative is titled Lanterns for Landon Down Syndrome Awareness. And each year, 1 in 700 babies are born with Down Syndrome. And so when I was 10 years old, my little brother Landon, who is now 14 years old, he's sitting over there, he was born with Down Syndrome. And so I've always seen it as my life's mission and purpose to be able to advocate for Landon and many other individuals who have Down Syndrome. And so I just created my own 501(c)(3) nonprofit, the Lanterns for Landon Foundation, where I'm currently raising scholarship money for individuals to attend the Alabama Special Camp for Kids and Adults. And I also have my very own Girl Scout Patch titled Lanterns for Landon, and anyone from kids and adults can earn this patch by doing different activities, which is on the Down Syndrome Alabama website. So if you want to go check that out, please do, but I'm really, really excited to be here tonight, and thank you so much for having me.
I know you hate to follow B to clean, Ms. Cornet, but do as fast as you can.
That's a tough act to follow. Tonight, this will be the first in a series of updates, quarterly updates, on the full forensic review that the city had done. And so first, I wanted to say that the city is totally committed to transparency, accountability, and responsible governance. And our decision to engage Proll, which is a forensic auditing firm, and then publishing their full report and making it, making it available to the public is a prime example. Some of the findings here, before we get into it, some of the findings here were uncovered by our own internal review, which in part led us to request the full forensic study. And some corrective action has already been taken. So this accountability report that I'm providing tonight shows that the city is being proactive and responding to address these issues. So the goal here is to walk through each one of the identified issues from the report and give a progress report to let you know what we're doing, to address each item, and to provide a target date for completion. And in future quarterly reports, I'll update you on the progress of all the unresolved issues. Okay. All right, Wendy. Oh, it's working. Okay. So let's take the first item, the erroneous financial reporting. The overstatement in the general fund balance of $36 million that was mentioned in the Proll report does not indicate that there was any missing money, but instead reflected an incorrectly reported general fund balance on interim and unaudited financial reports that were provided for the fiscal years '22 and '23. Information on hand shows that there were significant transfers from the general fund that were not made as commitments to capital projects were approved, and that left the general fund at an inflated balance. This impacted our internal, our internal recording on the interim financial statements that were provided by the previous CFO to elected leadership and in public documents. Corrective action to cure these errors was taken once the audited financial statements or input auditor BMSSs were published for both fiscal years. The audited financial year-end 2022 statements were published and made publicly available in August 2023, and then the 2023 statements were published in August of 2024. So we consider that item to be closed. Now, we do acknowledge that there were errors made in recording regular general entries and approval entries and auditor adjustments in prior years. The Munis payroll system contributed to the quality of those adjustments, but many of the errors and delays point back to a need for additional training and increased staffing levels in the finance department. These problems are going to be addressed moving forward with training, oversight, and self-checks and reconciliations. So moving forward, a system of self-review and quality control measures will be implemented to ensure the reliability of those interim financial statements that are being provided. The next item was noted was deleted, missing, and/or destroyed records. So we do acknowledge that there was, that there were electronic files and paper files that were deleted from the offices of the former city administrator and the former CFO treasurer. This included the removal of email history and phone data. It is unfortunate that these working files were unable to be retrieved, as it could have provided some assistance to the incoming city administrator and CFO to have these historical documents as a starting point. Through the help of our city clerk's office, BMSS, and Wallace Jordan, we have been able to recreate the permanent files, providing important reference information that would have normally been accessible to a successor. So from a financial perspective, none of the supporting documentation or proof related to financial transactions was removed, as this was hosted within Munis, which is our enterprise resource planning system. We do not believe any mission-critical information was lost in the process. However, we have turned over the information about this event to the appropriate authorities, and we've since increased the frequency and retention period of backup files. The city will continue to develop and refine its disaster recovery policies, but we have exhausted all efforts to recover these files and consider this issue closed as well. The next item has to do with the finance department being understaffed. Two former employees returned as part-time contractors to help bridge the gap and reclaim some lost institutional knowledge and experience. Robert Yeager, retired city CFO and treasurer, and then Melissa Woods, retired division director of general ledger and payroll. Both, and both of these individuals are CPAs. As you know, four additional positions have already been approved by council, and we are in the various stages of interview and selection process. Also, Melissa came out of retirement and has been appointed as a full-time provisional employee in the new senior financial analyst position, and she is really going to be instrumental in training new hires and existing employees in the historical best practices for the city. So we are actively working on this one, and our target for completion of this item is the first quarter of calendar year 2025. The next item noted was lack of experience and training in a particular division. We have identified experienced individuals with concentrated expertise in each of these areas to lead the effort in addressing correction. Kay Troop, an HR and payroll expert with a BMSS-related company, has joined us to provide onsite, to provide review and guidance and training over our payroll processes. She's actually helping us work on developing written payroll policies and procedures that will assist in onboarding the new payroll manager to ensure a clean handoff. Melissa Woods, who I just mentioned, will be instrumental in training new hires and existing employees in historical best practices for the general ledger. A thorough vetting process will ensure candidates selected for these new positions will have the necessary background, skills, and experience to make an immediate contribution to the team. Three additional office spaces are needed to accommodate the approved new positions and a budget amendment request to convert conference room spaces on the open, on the agenda tonight, for tonight. And we expect for our target date completion of this item to be the first quarter of 2025 calendar year. Next, lack of training skills and communication. So we acknowledge that there are unique skills that are required to manage payroll and general ledger functions. So experienced help from both Kay and Melissa during the transition period will promote and accelerate the learning curve for each of the new managers. Immediate attention is being given to training existing employees in their assigned roles. Both Kay and Melissa have extensive experience and a willingness to teach each other, sorry, teach others, not teach each other, and both are very committed to formal job training and cross-training. The emphasis on training and communication will be transferred to the new managers who will share in this commitment and priority. Written policies and procedures, of course, will assist employees in understanding their responsibility as it relates to the whole. Again, the target for completion of this item is the first quarter calendar year 2025. Lack of formal policies and procedures. So we've gathered peer policies to use as a starting point from peer cities. We plan to identify gaps in our processes to make sure these items are included in the final written policy. Care will be taken to make sure that we fold in the existing policies that we do have related to debt, investment, general fund balance, and budget stabilization in that final, incomplete policy for the city. A substantial amount of work has already been done on a policy related to grants and a policy related to payroll. So attention to the development of policies will commence once our open positions are filled, and our target for completion of a draft policy is first quarter of 2025. Next, we have the Munis accounting and software implementation. So the city acknowledges the Munis implementation process did not go smoothly. The general ledger module had fewer problems than the payroll module, and the city continues to deal with payroll issues that relate to the hasty implementation and setup of that system. I know system is perfect, and Munis definitely has its shortcomings, but it does appear most of our issues relate back to the setup and architecture of the payroll system. The payroll staff has worked tirelessly since implementation to correct payroll problems related to incorrect employee paychecks. Now let me be clear, paychecks are going out on time and are accurate, but our payroll team is spending a very disproportionate amount of time to make sure the payroll deadlines are being met with accuracy. In August, a software trainer came in to assess the situation and assist us with an evaluation, but it did not result in an immediate solution. Again, most errors seem to point back to the original setup of pay codes and deductions. We are currently evaluating our options that include a re-implementation and in-house revision. So our target for completion on this one is to have a, a action plan in place by the second quarter 2025, with the full resolution of this item to be, to be determined after we have made additional evaluation. The next item noted in the report were fluctuations in the finance department budget. The prior year fluctuations in the budget noted appear to be the result of planning for three senior positions to be deleted and the related payouts, and the combination of two positions into one when the finance division director positions were created. The fiscal year 2025 budgeting process involved an academic approach to budgeting revenues and expenses with the highest degree of precision possible. Examination of prior year actual revenues and expenditures will review to make sure we are, we are efficiently using our resources in keeping with the city's operating priorities. For that reason, we feel that this item is closed. The next item of note had to do with budget presentations. We do acknowledge there was a decline in the quality of budget information and detail in prior years, and this has been addressed with the approved fiscal year 2025 budget. So again, we find this item to be complete and closed. The next item has to do with a lack of complete and timely reconciliations. So we have been working to train personnel on the completion of bank reconciliations, but this has been delayed a bit with a vacancy in the, the division. but this has been delayed a bit with a vacancy in the, the, the division director payroll and general ledger position, and then other workload considerations. Development of fiscal policies and procedures will help, but an emphasis on self-checks and quality controls and reviews is essential here. Melissa Woods is going to help us train existing and new employees, and additional staffing will help bring these reconciliations up to date. The expected timeline to bring those reconciliations up to date is four to six months, so our target for completion of deciding is the second, second quarter calendar year 2025. Last item of note had to do with unaddressed payroll issues. So the city acknowledges past problems with the quarterly payroll tax recordings, the 4941s. Until the first quarter of 2024, first calendar year quarter of 2024, no reconciliation was being performed in connection with the preparation of that quarterly report, which includes completion of Schedule B. The second quarter 2024 941 filing was reconciled and properly filed, and we now have a documented process for reconciliations moving forward. Also, we have engaged Payroll Benefits Solutions, a BMSS company, to represent our interests before the IRS. As you know, the city paid $78,000 to satisfy the IRS's intent to levy, but the firm is representing the city to, to remedy this discrepancy as well as other issues related to prior year's unreconciled and incorrect, incorrect tax reporting. And our target for completion of that item is the second quarter calendar year 2025. In summary, as I noted before, many of the findings from this report were not a surprise. After I became a CFO, I identified many of these concerns and brought them to council, and these became supporting reasons for the request to conduct a forensic review. I wanted to make sure we had a full view and understanding of the issues, so thank you for allowing us to move forward with your full support. In the end, we were very happy to hear that parole found no financial fraud or asset misappropriation. Today, the city is in a strong financial position and has a large reserve of cash and investments. And during the September 2024 investment committee meeting, our advisor analyzed our bond rating as it relates to financial performance and determined the city's AAA bond rating remains secure. My team and I take our responsibility and charge over public dollars seriously, as does the mayor, council, and the rest of city government, and we want to demonstrate we are faithful custodians of your funds. We are committed to addressing all the concerns found in the report, and we plan to provide updates each quarter until all the remaining issues are resolved.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Any comments from the council on that before we move on to your business?
Yes, Mr. President. Let me start by saying thank you, because I know when you came in with an auditor mindset, you were not going to give us any numbers. You could not prove yourself, and that was invaluable and the right way to approach this. And when you saw an issue, you made sure to meet with every council member and tell them of the issue. Now, I think one thing that the media gets wrong, and some of the things that's out there is that, you know this from being an auditor, the audit is the investigation. The audit brings you forward the findings, and then you go, like you've done tonight, and shown how you remedied those findings. The investigation occurred when you first did your internal review, and then we handed up a forensic audit, which, by the way, and a lot of businesses, and the city would be the same, when you change CFOs, it is recommended to do a forensic audit, to go in and make sure that you're coming in with a clean slate, you know what you're facing as you come in as a new CFO. So that was not a, a crisis action, that was an action to take what you find and take it to the next level and get it reviewed. I commend you on jumping in there and solving some of those things right away. You know, it's unfortunate what happened with the, with the, the ledger entry issues because we did, we do have resolutions showing where we did move that money through the investment, investment fund, and where we did take that money and invest it in, in, you know, great, a great bond market, a treasury market, interest rate issue environment, and actually made money on that money that we moved over, that we're going to see roll off and, and, and in the next few months as those latter investments roll off, and we'll be able to have that money for a rainy day or for a future project. That was a good thing that the council did, that, you know, and I, no one to look at from there, they saw it as we, we made some mistakes on ledger, we did, but you corrected them. So I just want to say thank you for correcting that, for, thank you for having a timeline to correct the issues that are not corrected as such, and I hope this gets the story of what you and your team did, and what we all did working together, mayor and council, to, to take what was the issues that you brought to us, get answers, and rectify them as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, and, and this response really was in response to council member O'Fee's request to have an action and an update as to what are we doing to correct some of these items, which we definitely wanted to do. I think, I think one of the things that can be really confusing to the public is when we start talking about, you know, the general fund balance and then, and then conversation, right, happening about missing money. It's really, really hard for people who are not accountants to separate what the difference is between cash and investments in the general fund. And so the cash and investments that the city has, those cash and investments serve to, to fund everything the city does, not just the general fund, but also capital project commitments that we've already made, all of our special revenues, all of our internal service funds. So when we talk about the general fund balance being overstated, that had nothing to do with cash or our cash position. Our cash position has always been strong, and I totally agree with you, it was a wise move to take funds that, that we had borrowed and get them invested so that we have our money working for us instead of just sitting there. So thank you for that.
Ms. Corley, I have a question.
Counselor Murphy.
Oh, you have, you have. Okay. I know in the past, when they had the payroll issue mainly with between fire and police, they get paid differently, different timeframes, and the process that was done before was that they were told to, I guess, report their error to their commander or their supervisor and not go through payroll. Is that process still the process, or they go straight to payroll?
We do have, we do field some questions in payroll. I think both fire and police, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that fire schedule was a challenging one for payroll, and so those chiefs have determined that it's a wise idea for people to come to them and ask questions, and if you see something weird, right, then we're communicating directly with them to try to jump into action and solve those problems. And to my knowledge, we don't have any issues other than some weird things happening on, on a post due. We don't have, we don't have errors in payroll checks, which, am I right, Chief?
That's correct.
Okay.
We still report, still report to the assistant chief, and assistant chief goes through all that and reports to you.
And that was really just chain of command.
And you had mentioned that y'all had reported all this to the proper authorities. What authority is exactly, who were they?
To the state, yes.
Today, G?
Yes.
Thanks.
Counselor.
Yeah, Mr. President. So firstly, thank you, Mayor's Office, and thank you, Jennifer, for accompanying the request. I do want to say that this was not unsolicited, a non-solicited audit from a standpoint, again, as Jennifer stated, you know, we went through two CFOs, could be career, five, six-year period time. And once Jennifer made her first initial evaluation, as she stated, the goal was to say, look, we need to bring in some other support to make sure we can kind of proceed more forward, so thank you for, for, for doing that. So I know we're going to have several other updates as people rest of this year, you know, next year, so we'll continue to try to make that happen. I do want to say this, because a lot of people don't know about the fire, again, I'm not a fireman, but I, I would probably say the, y'all, you guys, our pay codes are, I do a lot more different type of pay codes than the average employee.
They're high.
So a little bit, a little bit about it, they work on, they work two on, I mean, one on, two off. So they have callback, they have a lot of different protocols, different than the average salary employee, that long as you work 40 or whatnot, you still get your hours, or some hourly folks is built in to have some form of overtime, but that may be 10%, but not like the fire department that work one on, two off. And one on is 24 hours, so I just want to be clear. Then they have other codes and rules they have to follow, they go over that. I think, Chief, don't you have a certain amount of time individuals can be up while working before, it's a lot of different things to go along with the requirement of operating equipment and working 24-hour shifts, so, again, I'm not a fireman, I just deal a lot of codes, and that can be extremely hectic. So the quick, the item is, is not, they don't cut, they don't keep that information to themselves. The chain of command moves up, questions are asked, and then it's solicited back to accounting process. So I just, for, for, for public record, it's quite a bit that goes along with the fire.
And we, we are working collaboratively together.
Okay, thank you.
If I could say, payroll department's an exceptional job today with payroll. We, we have no issues with payroll. We do have some discrepancies on checks, but the pay is correct. And so we do have a unique pay schedule, but every fire department in the state of Alabama does, we work similar hours, 24, 48 off, and so it is unique, but they're getting their hands around it, and we're satisfied.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Any other comments? Very good. Thank you, Ms. Corley.
Thank you.
Before we move to our regular business, I want to recognize former Council Joe Reeves. Always glad to have you back, Mr. Reeves. And now move to our consent agenda, as most of everyone here, I think, has been with us before and knows that consent is presented as one block of items where they will be read together, and we want to make one motion and one vote on each of those items together. We will move item number five from the consent agenda down to the regular agenda, but I would ask, is there any member who would like to move any other item, run through the 11 to the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of the public here to speak on items 1 through 11, and so we have to remove that and put it on the regular? Seeing none. Mr. Corley, if you'll read items 1 through 11, would you accept them number five, please?
Item number one approves the payment of the bills. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the October 3, 2024 work session in the October 7, 2024 meeting. Item three, resolution number 1892 dash 24, approves a 160 special retail more than 30 days alcohol license for AMC Patent Creek 15, doing business as American Multi-Senema, located at 4450 Creek Side Avenue, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 829324 approves a 040 retail beer on or off premises alcohol license and a 060 retail table line on or off premises alcohol license for Z and L Investments LLC, doing business as Chengdu Cuisine, located at 1550 Montgomery Highway, Suite O, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution, item number six, resolution 828924 appoints April Collins as a member to the Downtown Redevelopment Authority for Place Six for the term expiring December 31, 2027. Resolution number 829424 amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025 for the construction of new finance department offices as shown on exhibit A. Resolution number 829524 accepts an award from the Alabama Tourism Department for the SEC Baseball Tournament in the total amount of $575,000 and amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025, as shown on attached exhibit A, and authorizes the mayor is designated to execute any such agreements. Resolution 829624 authorizes Mayor Brocato for his designation to execute a letter of intent with Southern Emergency Consultants or Wheel Coach for the purchase of a new rescue unit for the fiscal year 2026 and to execute any and all documents necessary for that purchase. Resolution number 829724 authorizes the mayor or his designation to execute a letter of intent with Williams Fire Apparatus or stuff them for the purchase of a new fire engine for fiscal year 2026 and to execute any and all documents for that purchase. Resolution 829824 authorizes Mayor Brocato for his designation to execute a renewal of health services agreement with QCHC of Alabama LLC and any and all documents necessary for the execution of that agreement for the provision of inmate healthcare at the municipal jail.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
So we have a motion and a second. Actually, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ice habit, the motion carries. Now on the regular agenda, beginning with item number five, resolution number 8288-dash 24, Mr. Corley.
This, this resolution appoints Janine Bailey as a member of the Downtown Redevelopment Authority for Place Four for the term expiring December 31, 2025.
I understand, we will entertain a motion to continue this until the next meeting, is that correct, Counselor Murphy?
That's correct.
Would you make so the one motion?
Uh, move to continue item number five, resolution 828824.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Mr. President, just kind of comment. So just one comment, the only reason why we have not moved, moved this particular one, again, as I stated earlier, some of our appointees have to get approval from their organizations, and they have to go through a formal process, that just hasn't been done as of yet, so we hope to have it on the next one.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Well, now, item number 12, resolution number 8299-dash 24, and according to Mr. Martin, this has been cut to the city's satisfaction.
That's correct.
We will entertain a motion to withdraw.
Mr. President, I move to withdraw resolution number 8299-dash 24.
Second. We have a motion and second for withdrawal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ice habit, the motion carries. Item number 13, resolution number 8300-dash 24, Mr. Martin, I understand it also has been cut to your satisfaction.
That's correct. This one has also been cut.
Mr. President, I move to withdraw resolution number 8300-dash 24.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ice habit, the motion carries. Item number 14 is resolution number 8301-dash 24, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs abatement of that nuisance pursuant to Alabama law for the property located at 425 Shades Avenue.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 8301-dash 24.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval, Mr. Martin?
This is a repeat customer, and as of today, it is overgrown.
Very good. Any questions from the body for Mr. Martin? You see a picture there in front of you, anyone from the public here to speak about the address at Shades Avenue? Seeing none, we have a motion and second for approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ice habit, the motion carries. Item number 15, resolution number 8302-dash 24, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs abatement of that nuisance pursuant to Alabama law for the property located at 2344 Mountain Oaks Lane.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 8302-dash 4.
Second. We have a motion and second. Mr. Martin, no updates since Thursday?
No updates. There is still, there are still weeds and grass taller than the 12 inches per code closer to the residence.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the body? Anyone from the public here to speak on the Mountain Oaks Lane address? We have a motion and second for approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. The ice habit, the motion carries. Item number 16, resolution number 8303-dash 24, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs abatement of that nuisance pursuant to Alabama law for the property located at 2337 Tyler Road.
Mr. President, I move for the approval of resolution number 8303-dash 24.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir. As of today, this property is still overgrown.
Any questions from the body? Anyone from the public here to speak regarding Tyler Road? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ice habit, the motion carries. Item number six, 17, resolution number 828624, Mr. Corley.
This grant's conditionally used to allow for an indoor recreational golf venue with on-premise sale of alcohol for the property located at 5844 Elsie Road, Hoover, Alabama, in Knox Square, in accordance with the conditions attached as exhibit two to the resolution.
Mr. President, I move to approve resolution number 8286-dash 24.
Second. Motion and second for approval, any questions for Mr. Martin on the item? Anyone from the public have a comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ice habit, the motion carries. Item number 18, ordinance number 24-dash 2660, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends ordinance number 263 to rezone the property located at 3951 South Shades Crest Road to R1 Single Family District.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number 24-dash 2660.
Second. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance. Any questions or comments from the body on the item? Anyone from the public here to speak regarding the changes on? Seeing none. There's a motion and second for adoption. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Counselor Posey?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Driver?
Aye.
Counselor Murphy?
Aye.
Counselor McClinton?
Aye.
Counselor Lya?
Aye. Vote of six ayes and zero nays. The motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Finally tonight, item number 19, ordinance number 24-2661, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends ordinance number 263 to rezone the property located at 2308 Old Red Bridge Road to R1 Single Family District.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number 24-2661.
Second. We have a motion and a second for adoption. Any questions or comments from the body on that item? Any comments tonight from the public? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Counselor Posey?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Driver?
Aye.
Counselor Murphy?
Aye.
Counselor McClinton?
Aye.
Counselor Lya?
Aye. With both six ayes and zero nays, the motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Now, on the floor, two members of the body, if they have any comments tonight? Seeing none. Any member of the public here like to make a comment? Schultz.
Robin Schultz of La Park. A couple of questions regarding Ms. Cornet's report. I do appreciate the report, I think a lot of us do. A couple of weeks ago, I was told that my definition of transparency and others may not be the same. So I just want to make sure that you all understand my definition of it. I define it as government transparency is a government's obligation to be open, accountable, and honest with citizens about how it conducts business and spends expenses. In the report, Ms. Cornet opened by saying that the city was planning to be transparent about the report. So I hope that's the case. I have two questions on it. Mr. McClinton already touched on one of them in saying, asking who the appropriate authorities were that this was reported to. And Ms. Cornet looked over and questioned whether it was the Attorney General. Can we be confirmed on that, that it was the Attorney General that it was submitted to? Yes, no, maybe? Okay, so we have no answer on that one. The second thing was, in the deleted items, the, she stated, "We don't believe financial data was deleted," indicating that there could have been, but we don't believe. Do we know for a fact that none was deleted? Yes or no?
Yes. We know.
We know that it was.
We have no money till data was deleted.
Okay, good. Was there, and so even going further with that, was there, can we find out what data was deleted? Is that going to be available? Because you can't do a forensic, you can't go forensically into the hard ground.
Ms. Schultz, you've been cutting a long time.
I'm sorry.
This is the comment section. Just make your comments.
Okay. That was, that was my question. I wonder if we can go ahead and touch on that as we go forward. Thank you.
If you're new to the chamber, we, this is the comment section. We're happy to hear from you. We recognize for three minutes if you'd give us your name and the area of town you're from.
My name is Ashley Lobel, and I live at 3504 Shandwick Place. So as I said, my name is Ashley Lobel. I am a Hoover resident. I grew up in Hoover, and I purposely moved back to Hoover because I love this city. I went to Spain Park High School, went to Berry, and also went to Birmingham Southern and played golf there. So very passionate about my community, and I've actually sent several emails to you guys in regards to a certain issue currently with the Planning and Zoning Committee, and that is a application to change, to conditional, a conditional request by ESCO to change a parcel of land that's actually 18 acres to a residential use versus what it is currently zoned for, which is commercial. So in that area, there's going to be 300 apartments plus a five-story hotel and some other areas that they've proposed, and the community is not okay with this. We've not been okay with this for about 15 years, and ESCO continues to try to drive something in our part of town that we do not want. So I wanted to update you guys. There is a survey that is going around as well as a petition. The petition currently has 1,654 signatures with opposition to this. In addition, we've started a survey to ask the community for what they would like to see in that area, and we have over 255 responses. So I wanted to just make you guys aware of this issue. I know it's not in front of you guys yet, but I love open communication, and I think it's important for us to have communication between everyone. So with that being said, I would appreciate your response. And that's it.
Good evening. I'm Chris Taylor, I'm the Redding circle area of Hoover, and wanted to just bring to the city leadership's attention an incident that happened, not involving the city of Hoover employees or assets, but of an AMWAST issue. It was on the first of October. I came home and found that my personal vehicle had been damaged. And when I pulled the video from my security system, I did see and have downloaded one of the trucks had damaged my vehicle. I'm sure it was certainly an accident. I doubt the driver knew that he or she did that. But the damage that occurred, it's on camera, it's on video. Was contacted, actually had a police report done, got that taken care of, contacted the city environmental folks to kind of see what next steps would be. And got a prompt call back following business day, gave me some guidance on basically the call, AMWAST, and get that process done. Unfortunately, I have yet to hear back from anyone from AMWAST management. I was told I'd hear back from them within 24 hours to my first phone call, and then 72 hours after that. And when I called back multiple times and confirmed that they did have, in fact, my information, still had not received the call. So I'm stuck with a vehicle that has damage from the call of the truck. And as you move forward in those discussions with AMWAST, again, the drivers, they're working hard. They're dealing with what they've got to do. Made an accident, had an accident, that's fine, we can work on that. But the management, there needs to be something to encourage them to follow up when there's an incident. So I'm going to continue to work on that from my end, but as a citizen, just want to make sure that y'all are aware and any bravest conversations up as they come forward in the future. And that's all I've got for you.
May I make sure I get your last name correct?
Tate, T-A-T-E.
Chris Tate. Will you stick around, Mr. Tate, and make sure we have your contact information?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Ken King, Ross Bridge. Just wanted to publicly say thank you, Counselor Murphy, for your leadership on getting the Crowell report to the light of day and the findings and the city's response to it, and hopefully on track to be able to address all the fighting. So again, I know it wasn't easy. I know you had partners. Greatly appreciate it, wanted to acknowledge it. Again, I wish it didn't get to where it got to in terms of this level of transparency and accountability. But again, want to thank you publicly for partnering with the folks who are willing to partner with you to make sure that these issues were addressed publicly. Thank you.
Any other comments tonight?
Just, and I appreciate that. I do want to say that, since I've been on the council, had a pretty good relationship, business relationship with the mayor's office and also my colleagues. And for the most part, when things come about, everyone is in agreement with it. I don't want to take away anything from the mayor's office, Jennifer, the hard work she put in place with this matter. And also, me and I talked some while back, trying to formalize when to ex present the information after. County had opportunity to kind of dive into it, so they kept their head around as well, too, because the reports come out. So I didn't want to make that knowledge. So thank you again, but I thank you, my counsel, and also my mayor's office.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Appreciate your attendance.